First of all, I want to apologize for our tardiness. We had a few things that we were trying to take care of and took us a little longer than anticipated. But what we're going to do today at the work session, we're going to do our best. I understand we have quite a few speakers here testifying for or against the Lafarge project, which is the way we do business, miscellaneous business is one of the last things we normally do. But to be respectful of all of these citizens who signed up and your time, instead of making you wait for the last thing, because we have 19 items to do and you're number 19, if you're listening, let me see, all of these virtual, 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 virtual? So if you're listening, you're number 19. Ordinarily, you would be last on the list. We're going to move you up front to be respectful of your time, and I'm going to ask you to please be respectful of others' time. You have three minutes to speak, but if someone else has already said what you're going to say, if you're for the resolution, you can simply say you're for the resolution. You don't have to get into a whole lot of detail about why you're for it, especially if 10 other people already said the same thing. So we're going to give this a shot and see how it works out. So what we're going to do, we're going to start with this item on the miscellaneous business first and see how it works out. Councilman Marks, take it away. Resolution 15-23, miscellaneous business.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Last October, a little more than two months before the end of the last term, the previous county council approved Resolution 3922 to allow review of a planned unit development at the Lafarge Quarry. That resolution advanced a project that included 2.83 million square feet of industrial warehouses and other uses on more than 400 acres, the largest area ever proposed for a planned unit development. Let me outline four main reasons why it is now the appropriate time to revoke this resolution. Chris, can you? First, the preceding resolution was prematurely approved. The previous council approved this plan despite the fact that there was no traffic plan for dealing with the impacts of this development, no conclusive environmental review of possible contaminants on the land, no process by which the developer would pay for the enormous strain imposed on infrastructure in the surrounding community, and the fact that the plan for a community benefit of donating land to the county and to Baltimore County Public Schools for a vocational school was uncertain at best. Yes, the developer was forced to engage in a substantial conversation about these issues once I became councilman for this area, but the fact is, the law only gives us so much time after which the project moves through the normal development process and the community is left with, quote, "a leap of faith." Second, the county attorney has provided a legal analysis that raises questions about whether this planned unit development should have been even allowed in the first place. In the county attorney's words from a communication to me on May 1st, 2023, quote, "The entire Lafarge property is zoned RC8, a residential zone. Accordingly, the plain language of 430.c3.c would appear to prohibit non-residential uses in a proposed PUD that does not also contain a non-residential zone," end quote. I know the county attorney is here today. The opinion notes an inconsistency between this provision and other elements of county law dealing with planning developments questioning the clarity of the council's actions last October. Make no mistake, this project will likely be litigated for years. The opponents will challenge this project for the next half decade. That is neither good for the community, the county, or the developer. Third, there is significant opposition from the community. In February, a standing-room-only crowd demonstrated its opposition to this project. There's virtually no local support. If you research the evolution of the planned unit development law over the past two decades, there have been many changes, but one consistent theme has been the need for community engagement and support. You will hear testimony about the overwhelming opposition from residents who fear encroachment on their way of life. Fourth, and finally, I asked the developer several times to withdraw this application and work with me and the community on a better path forward that creates an overlay district consistent with the master plan and the upcoming comprehensive zoning map process. Regrettably, recent actions by the developer and attorneys have shown a lack of goodwill that would be required to advance such a complex and vast project in a sensitive area of Middle River. For these reasons, I am asking my council colleagues to stand with me and the community I represent in support of Resolution 1523 to revoke approval of the B.C. Middle River Park PUD at the Lafarge Quarry. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any questions or comments from the members? Okay. Chris, our first speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker this afternoon is Delegate Ryan Noraki, who is here in person.
We will skip them and hold them for later when they show up. You want to wait for Ryan? Absolutely not. Thank you for being here, and go to the next speaker.
Bear with me one moment. I wasn't prepared. I have to find them on our list. Our next speaker is Nita Beanland, and she is on virtually. Ms. Beanland, you are a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
My name is Nita Beanland. I live in Bird River Beach community, and I support the 1523 resolution.
Is that it, Ms. Nita?
Yes, sir.
Well, listen, thank you so much for being brief and being respectful of everybody else's time. Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is Linda Feltz. Ms. Feltz is not on. I'm going to go to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Cassandra Durand. Ms. Durand, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Cassandra Durand. I live in Middle River, specifically Bird River Beach as well, and I just wanted to say I fully support Resolution 1523 that's been put forth by Councilman Marks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Durand, and we certainly appreciate your calling in, and we certainly appreciate you being brief. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Molly Fisher. Ms. Fisher, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hi, my name is Molly Fisher. I am representing from the Oliver Beach community as well, and I'm speaking in support of this resolution with all of the repeated things that Councilman Marks.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher. Again, thank you for calling in, and we certainly appreciate you being brief and being respectful of others' time. Next caller, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly. Our next speaker is Susan Beanland. Ms. Beanland, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony. Ms. Beanland?
Yes, yes.
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Susan Beanland. I reside in Bird River Beach, and I'm for the resolution.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for sharing your comments with us. We appreciate your calling in. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Norman Sines. Mr. Sines, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
My name is Norman Sines. I've been a resident of Middle River for 68 of my 71 years. I've served my country for three years in the Army. I served my community as member, board member, vice president, and president of the Oliver Beach Community Association. I currently serve as a member of the Bird River Beach Community Association. I have also served as member, board member, vice president, and president of the Essex Middle River White Marsh Chamber of Commerce. My current residence is an 80-acre farm in close proximity to the Lafarge property. I'm proud to say that my property is in a conservation easement with the Gunpowder Valley Conservancy. I feel it is important to say that I believe in private property. It is one of the things that makes our country unique, the right to say and do with our property as we see fit, with only one caveat: if what we do with our property affects no one else. Further development of Middle River at this time meets that criteria of affecting everyone who lives here in extremely negative ways. Therefore, I am supporting Resolution 1523 to revoke the Lafarge PUD. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sines. We appreciate you calling in and sharing your comments with us. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Joshua Crone. I do not see... Oh, yes, there he is. Mr. Crone, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Joshua Crone. I'm a resident of Oliver Beach, Middle River. I just wish to express my strong support of Resolution 1523.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crone. We appreciate your calling in and sharing your comments with us and being brief. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Our next speaker is Andrew Dysonberg. Mr. Dysonberg, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Andrew Dysonberg. I'm a resident of Middle River. I'd like to thank everybody for their time and for being here today. I'd like to especially thank Councilman David Marks for his continued hard work and dedication towards helping our community, and I would like to say that I support the resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dysonberg. Appreciate your calling in and sharing your comments with us. Next caller, please.
Our next speaker is Matthew Gurka. Mr. Gurka, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony. Mr. Gurka?
Next caller, please.
Wait a minute. Mr. Gurka, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But my name is Matt Gurka. As president of the Bird River Beach Community Association, I'm speaking on behalf of all of our members that we support Resolution 1523. A PUD designation on this land does nothing for our community, nor does it promote smart growth. I mean, however, 400 acres of land was changed from RC8 to potentially almost unrestricted uses kind of beyond comprehension. So I think that's it.
Well, we appreciate your comments, and thank you for calling in and sharing them with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next caller, please.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is Robert Ramadka. Mr. Ramadka, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Chairman Julia Jones of the Baltimore County Council and members of the council. I ask as resident and property owner of 10416 Vincent Road located off of Ebenezer Road that the Baltimore County Council at today's meeting consider at the appropriate time introducing and passing a motion to table Resolution 15-23 at this time, rather that Baltimore County Council introduce and pass a motion to table Resolution 39-22 PUD at this time. If the county council agrees to table one and/or both resolutions, this will allow adequate time for a meeting to take place consisting of Councilman David Marks, who now represents this area, appropriate county departments, the developer named in the PUD, and citizens from the neighborhood and community to meet and submit plans that would be acceptable and approving Resolution 39-22 PUD. In this regard, you have received a copy attached here, too, of the letter from the Chesapeake Gateway Chamber of Commerce that was sent on January 11th, '23 to John Ochesky, County Executive, his appropriate department heads, and to the chairman of the Baltimore County Council, setting forth in detail what infrastructure and utility problems now exist and what additional problems will take place if Resolution 3922 PUD is approved. While the Chamber of Commerce is not opposed to having the Lafarge site developed, this letter, as a result of the Chamber's extensive review, is recommending that this matter be tabled to allow further review with all parties concerned. While being a long-term member of the Chamber, I am not representing the Chamber in my remarks. In closing, if the Baltimore County Council does not wish to table Resolution 1523 and/or Resolution 39-22 PUD, then in that event, I ask that the Baltimore County Council revoke Resolution 3922 and the PUD application at this time. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments and appreciate the well-thought-out letter that you sent. I did read it, and I appreciate it very much, including the photos that are attached. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Walter Jackson. Mr. Jackson, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Yes, this is Reverend Walter Jackson of Chase United Methodist Church. I live at 6601 Ebenezer Road, and I fully support Councilman Marks and his resolution for every reason that he stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Jackson. Appreciate your calling in and sharing your comments with us. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Crone. Ms. Crone, you are on as a panelist, and you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Crone. I live in Middle River, and I strongly support Resolution 1523. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Crone. We appreciate you calling in and sharing your comments with us and your brevity. Next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Our next speaker is David Sines. I do not see Mr. Sines on. I will come back to him. Our next speaker after that is Chip Rup. I do not see Mr. Rup on as a attendee as well. Then the next speaker is Cynthia J. Ms. J, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Hi, my name is Cynthia J. I'm a resident of Chase Manor, and I agree with the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. J. We appreciate your comments, and thank you for calling in.
Did I miss someone?
Alexandra Curly and Ian...
Oh, I'm sorry. Next one is Alexander Curly. Mr. Curly, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Hello, I am Alexander Curly, and I am a resident of Oliver Beach. I can say that I and everyone else in my community support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Curly. We appreciate your calling in and sharing your comments with us. Delegate Shalaga, if you're ready? Yes, yes, both of them. No, come right up here behind the thing here. Delegate Noraki, we certainly appreciate you both being here today, and thank you for coming in and sharing your comments with us. About every day, we get other elected officials to come here, so we appreciate you coming in, and take as much time as you like.
Great. Thanks so much. For the record, I'm Delegate Kathy Shalaga. I'm excited to be here before you. I've never testified in here before, and you really get through them quick. You need to come to Annapolis. They use every bit of the three minutes. Delegate Noraki and I are here together, obviously, and thank you for allowing us to testify. We're here in support of Resolution 1523. A number of issues are pertinent to this resolution of, I think, utmost importance for the future of this huge 435-acre parcel of land in eastern Baltimore County is the lack of road access. So apparently, we've learned in discussions that when Route 43 was constructed, there were discussions about building two connector roads from the Lafarge-Earls Road area over to Route 43, but it never came to fruition. So allowing any kind of development, large especially, but even small development in that area puts too much pressure on Ebenezer Road, which is not a road that would be widened, Earls Road, and certainly Eastern Avenue. Any of you that have been to Benji's Drive-In know that there just can't, you know, that road cannot handle much more traffic than what's there today, and it's a historic community. You can't really widen the road there. And there are a few other issues that Ryan will tackle here as we're before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm Delegate Ryan Noraki. I'm here testifying in support of Bill 1523. I obviously represent District 7A, which includes this area with Delegate Shalaga, but I'm also a Middle River resident, so I'm deeply aware of this project, deeply aware of this area. I believe that Councilman Marks's bill is a very responsible bill, not only with respect to this project, but with respect to this process in general, right? At the state level, for instance, I know we've got several former state colleagues here, our governor, for instance, is not able to make an appointment for judges within the last six months of their term, and I think that's a wise approach there when you're getting near the end of a term or the end of possibly a councilperson's term in a district here like we're talking about. I think that's a measured approach that we've decided to take at the state level. I think this is reflective of that sort of approach at the county level. It allows for a reevaluation. Often, we see changes in administration in Annapolis where one governor may have a different priority than the next governor, and that new governor can come in and reevaluate executive orders that the previous governor may have put in place. And this allows for reconsideration of those kinds of things. With respect to this project itself, you know, there were initial estimates that had shown anywhere as high as, I've seen numbers as high as 11,000 new vehicles on the road, and I know that there's other numbers that might be lower than that, but regardless of what the number is, it's a considerable amount of new traffic on these roads that are not capable of handling that amount of traffic. To Delegate Shalaga's point, there was proposals in the past to have two access roadways come off of Earls Road to funnel traffic more appropriately back to Route 43, the state Road 43, which is a connector road that can handle a significant amount more traffic than either Eastern Avenue or Ebenezer Road. And unfortunately, at this time, those roadways do not exist, and for those reasons, among others, Delegate Shalaga and I have ourselves submitted letters to the state. Congressman Harris has also submitted a request to the EPA for further study of the parcel of land. There's been a lot of industrial use on this property for a long period of time. There's some concern about what may have been deposited in the soil there, and unfortunately, we still haven't fully reached the terminus of those explorations as well. And so for all those reasons, I think that this approach is not only right for this particular parcel, but I think it's a responsible approach for the county in general for other instances that may fall into this sort of circumstance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Delegate Noraki and Delegate Shalaga. We certainly appreciate you coming in, stopping by, and sharing your comments with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One second, please.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank Delegates Noraki and Shalaga. I know we've actually toured the property together, and I appreciate your partnership in supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, one second, please. Oh, really? Okay. Kathy and Ryan, thank you for coming in today. Kathy, was this in your previous district, this area?
Yes, I've represented this district for 13 years, and it's a wonderful, the rural character in eastern Baltimore County is amazing, and...
Although the parts of your district in the third district are the best, correct?
Yes, certainly, certainly the best. But one point I would like to bring up since you mentioned that, Councilman Catch, is that we, there was a community meeting as required for this process, and the crowd that showed up is the largest I've ever seen.
Is that right?
In 13 years of representing Baltimore and Harbor County, I've never seen that many people show up. It was overflow, exceeded fire regulations. We had to send people away. It was standing-room-only, and there was no one there in favor of the project. So it was a unanimous opposition to the proposal, and, you know, that lends some credence to what Councilman Marks has before you.
I have an observation, and I do have a serious question. My observation is that I supported both of you in the election, and apparently, one of you doesn't know how to tell time. And if, you know, I was a school teacher for many years, and if the mail delegate needs any help on how to read a clock, so you're on time, I'm available. Okay?
Thank you. I think my dad said, if you're 10 minutes early, you're on time. If you're on time, you're late, and if you're late, you're dead.
Councilman, if we could just get a little bit more construction on 695, and we can get, you know, a little bit more going on there, I think I would have been okay here.
My serious question is, I know that a couple members of the county council have had PIA's filed, and I don't quite... About this issue, and I don't quite understand why, but have you two also been a subject of a PIA?
Go ahead.
I believe we may be the subject of a PIA indirectly through, you know, PIA requests, I believe, of Councilman Marks. I will say that for me personally, I thought that that was an unnecessarily hostile approach to take with this project to potentially put community members in that way. It felt like, frankly, we were trying to create a list of people in the community that were opposed to the project.
You know, people have a perfect right to express their opinion, whether it be by phone, email, et cetera, and when I heard it, I was not very happy. I wasn't one of them that was subject to the PIA, but not very happy about it at all. I don't know what the agenda is, but knowing the two of you and the two members of the council who are involved, I know that there's nothing to be found with those emails, and, you know, one of the things that we all have to do is we've got to make every effort to work together. This does not, when somebody does this, it certainly does not encourage working together, and I think it's a shame. So I thank you both for coming to Towson, and Ryan, I'll, we can talk. And Ryan, I'll, we can talk.
Yes, sir. That was, we usually do the resolutions toward the end. That was my fault. I think I told you approximate time. So very happy you're here. Thank you.
Councilman Patoka, Councilman Catch, I'm glad you brought that up because oddly enough, a West Side Councilman, council member was part of that PIA. It's odd, you know, maybe reckless, I don't know.
Say one more thing.
One more thing, Councilman?
Yes, one more thing. You know, I, I think I kind of referenced toward the end of my comments, the lack of goodwill that has now been produced. I don't think the people of Oliver Beach and Bird River Beach and Middle River appreciate a developer or their representatives rifling through their emails to us. Thank you.
Okay. We thank you for coming, and you have the last word.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're an open book.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Just to recap, Mr. Chair, Ian Beanland, David Sines, and Chip Rup are not on as attendees. They all signed up to speak. So I'm going to go to the next speaker, who would be Todd Newman. Mr. Newman, you're on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hi, I'm Todd Newman. I'm a member of the Bird River Beach community. And I would also like to say that I am fully in support of Resolution 1523. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Appreciate you sharing your comments with us. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next registered speaker was Ray Reineer. Mr. Reineer, oh, yes, he is on now. Mr. Reineer, you are a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Oh, okay. My name is Ray Reiner, pardon me, longtime member of Oliver Beach, past president and treasurer and secretary of Oliver Beach, also a member of the Essex Middle River Civic Council. In fact, I'm a board member of the Essex Middle River Civic Council. And I would like to say that Oliver Beach, consisting of about 550 homes, is in support of Resolution 1523.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your comments and thanks for sharing them with us. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Steve Kierna. Mr. Kierna, you are on, and you may begin your testimony. Mr. Kierna? I'm not getting a response, Mr. Chair. He is on, and he is unmuted. I can come back to him later.
We're waiting for you.
Yeah, hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Steve Korna. I've been a Bird River Beach resident for 25 years. Currently, the vice president of the Bird River Beach Community Association. I would like to say that I'm for Resolution 1523. And that's all I've got.
All right, that's enough. We appreciate you sharing your comments with us. Thank you so much. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is Yvonne Manning. Ms. Manning is here in person.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Yvonne Manning. I'm the pastor of St. John Episcotic Church. And I'm here in support, in support of the Resolution 1523. I'd like to say that we have been in the community, the church, which originally began as the Chase School in part of the history of Maryland, has been in the community for 164 years. And we want to preserve that history. You can find us listed on the Maryland Immaterial Historic Properties BA 1852, on the Maryland Historical Trust. And for those reasons, we believe that this resolution is not in our best interest. And again, I support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come here and spend the afternoon with us. We appreciate your comments very much. Godspeed. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Robert Bendler. Mr. Bendler, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony. You may unmute yourself, Mr. Bendler.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I will be brief, but I am Robert Bendler. I'm the president of the Essex Middle River Civic Council, which is an umbrella group representing many community associations impacted by this PUD. We oppose the Lafarge PUD. We support Resolution 1523 to revoke it for the following reasons. As David indicated, it's premature. It's still being reclaimed. Its legality is being questioned by the county attorney. Non-residential development is prohibited on underlying, when the underlying zoning is residential. 3 million square feet of warehouse on RC zone land is totally inappropriate. Traffic would be impacted overwhelmingly. Community and area residents' opposition is substantial, as witnessed in the CIM. There are many, many unanswered county agency concerns and questions. The state reclamation plan has not been fulfilled. And the county reclamation of property plan, which is required under 32-4-502, has not been submitted. And that's a requirement, to the best of my knowledge, before any kind of zoning change should be considered. Finally, in my many years in Stegen County government service, I have never witnessed a law firm or developer invoke the Freedom of Information Act to access constituents' communication with their elected representative. I find it unwarranted, unprecedented, and inappropriate intrusion into the council's domain. However, there's nothing to hide. So please support this resolution and revoke the PUD. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bendler. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next registered speaker was Kelly Lane. I cannot find Ms. Lane on our attendee list. So I will go to Heather Patty. Ms. Patty, you're on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Heather Patty, and I am the president of the White Marsh Cowington Community Association. And today, we are here, I'm here to show our support for our neighbors in Bird River and Middle River by showing support for Resolution 1523. The Middle River Park PUD was pushed through before the end of former Councilwoman Kathy Bevan's final term, despite 100% community opposition. For this reason, we fully support Resolution 1523, which is not only thoughtful but appropriate. On a personal note, I'm highly offended that the attorneys associated with the Middle River PUD felt the need to file the PIA requests that we've been discussing about the emails. If anyone's looking for evidence of a conspiracy, they should obtain, the people should obtain legal counsel and request the PIA's of former Councilwoman Kathy Bevan's emails to look for collusion between Lafarge and other entities regarding the zoning changes. Again, we want to show our support for Resolution 1523. Thank you.
A question. Yeah, Heather, I want to thank you for your advocacy for animals. I do take a look at your website periodically.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments with us, Ms. Patty. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. We had some other registered speakers who are not in attendance. That would be Suzanne Hasselbeck, Lynn Stevens, and Tim Stevens. Our next speaker will be Joan Mealy Kruger, who is here in person.
Okay, fantastic.
Good evening or afternoon. I'm asking for your support of Resolution 1532. My name is Joan Mealy Kruger. I am a resident of Middle River. I am also on the board for the Bird River Road Neighborhood Association, on the board for the Essex Middle River Civic Council. I have spoken out for my community at multiple town halls, voiced my opinion at county council meetings, have met with developers and lawyers, been part of community input meetings, development meetings, and I was on the Lafarge Task Force that Councilman Marks put together, all because I care. And I don't just care about my community. I care about the surrounding communities. The Lafarge Task Force met several times. Chesapeake Real Estate Group was present at some of those meetings. There was a lot of back and forth, but there was issue after issue raised, more questions than answers, more uncertainty than fact. And during the community input meeting, the community concerns and pushback was so great against the PUD that they deserved to be listened to and respected. What I can tell you is this. During the task force meetings and correspondence, there was nothing nefarious, no plot, no conspiracy, no complete disregard or anything said or presented. This was not a swipe at big developer, big business, or big money. The PUD, quite simply, that it does not work in this specific area. And for my efforts, because I care, I had been told that my emails are free game to be read and used any way a lawyer for big development sees fit. When I heard this, I called my husband and I said, I don't know if I should laugh or cry. This experience has become demoralizing. During 2022, the seven of you campaigned and asked all the same thing. See me, listen to me, trust me, and choose me. And it worked. But with your win comes great responsibility, not only to your district, but to every district when you vote. The way you vote on any bill or resolution sends a message to communities, developers, environmental groups. You each are responsible for every county resident's future way of life. So I ask you to vote in favor of Resolution 1523. This time, it is the community asking each of you to see us, listen to us, trust us, and choose us. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for coming here today and sharing your testimony with us. We appreciate it very, very much. We hear you with impeccable clarity. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Josh Sines. Mr. Sines, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute and begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon. I'd like to speak on some of the breakdown during this process and how the laws under planned unit development was not followed. During the concept plan conference, the public was locked out for 85% of the meeting, not able to hear any issues or what issues were brought up by the county departments because we weren't given the passcode to access the meeting. The community input meeting held on February 23rd was over capacity for the building. Hundreds of community members were turned away, not able to speak. The developer's attorney, Mr. Mudd, was allowed to moderate that meeting, not a representative of Department of Permits as required under the law. He was able to choose who to call on and who to ignore. I myself was ignored repeatedly. However, there was unanimous opposition to this PUD. Not a single person spoke in favor of it. Under the law, I requested members of the following departments to attend: Environmental Protection, Sustainability, Planning, Wrecks and Parks, Public Works, and Transportation, none of which could answer any of the questions concerning the PUD, all saying that at this time, they did not have the answers, being too early in the process. I would ask, what is the point of holding a CIM when none of the departments have answers to the community's questions? This PUD has the potential to completely change the character of our existing communities. If this were to move forward, our communities will continue to use any means possible to fight this project for as long as it takes. It's my understanding that the attorneys working for Chesapeake Realty and Lafarge PIA'd my councilman and Councilman Patoka for emails, communication concerning this PUD. I find this offensive. What a blatant attempt to attack this council by going after one of your members. For them to ask for emails from constituents is nothing more than a means to personally attack members of the community who contacted their elected representatives about a project they were not in favor of. During elections, you all run as Democrats and Republicans, but when you are elected, you are the Baltimore County Council, the legislative body of our county. And if you allow a law firm to intimidate your vote by these kinds of bullying tactics, where will that end? I would urge this council to vote yes on Resolution 1523 and send a message that this council represents the residents of Baltimore County and respects our right to reach out to this council about issues we're concerned about in our communities. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Mr. Sines, we appreciate you calling in and sharing your comments with us. Thank you very, very much. Next speaker, please. We're almost done.
Have to go back, Mr. Chair. We have someone who wasn't on who is now on. Chip Rup. Mr. Rup, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
I'm going to make this very simple. I can't say anything more than what's already been said, but I support the resolution, and I ask you to vote for it.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to tell Mr. Rup hello. We are childhood friends.
Yes, hello.
Good to hear your voice, Chip.
Same here.
Chip, do you feel that you are a childhood friend of?
I do.
That's what, friendles?
I do. He was a hell of a wrestler.
Okay, yeah, he's a legend.
Yes, he is.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro. Thank you very much, Mr. Chip.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Colleen Amaral. Ms. Amaral, you're on as a panelist. You may unmute and begin your testimony. I'm unable to unmute her. I'm not sure if she's having technical difficulties. I can come back to her, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Okay.
I'll leave her on as a panelist. Our next speaker, who would be Jason Farley. Mr. Farley is not on, so I will go to Jason Sines. Mr. Sines, you're on as a panelist. You may unmute and begin your testimony.
Hi, my name is Jason Sines. I'm a member of the Bird River Beach community. I support PUD 1523. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your comment. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next registered speaker was Carol Hart. Ms. Hart is not on at this time. Our last speaker is Jana Leonard. Ms. Leonard, you're on as a panelist. You may unmute and begin your testimony.
Good evening, everybody. Again, great statements from everyone else who's already spoken. I want to thank the Councilman Marks. What a pleasure to have someone that I feel is fighting on behalf of the citizens in the area where he represents, as well as entire Baltimore County, the other county council members who are supporting us as well, and also the joint effort with our state legislators, especially Mr. Noraki, who is our representatives in the area. I'm part of the Bird River Community Association. I'm supporting Bill Resolution 1523. I've heard a lot of statements about the traffic in the area. One of my big concerns has always been the health of the surrounding streams and rivers, and also the wildlife, maybe infringing on migratory, or just migration laws, not just birds, but all migration. There is an Eagle Protection Act in the country. It's a federal law. It's not an endangered species now in Maryland, but all that area, their eagles are being
incursion because of all the development. The streams and rivers, the untold number of acres of trees have been clear cut along the Campbell Boulevard and the White Marsh Boulevard extension that reduces oxygen, increases carbon dioxide, increases carbon monoxide from the cars that are there. Substantial runoff is an overflow of sediment ponds that's going directly into the Windless Run, the White Marsh Run, which is going to the Bird River, to the Gunpowder, and to this Chesapeake Bay. There's been no open space dedicated with all these hundreds of acres of compact development. There has been no added open space in parks. This is Zone RC-8. It's zoned for wineries. We can make it into a beautiful spot. I feel this is a turning point, how we go from this point and how we use this piece of property. We are in much need of public access to open spaces and parks. There are studies that reveal that developments like this proposed industrial park causes aggression, and that coming down beautiful Ebenezer Road with this quaint mom-and-pop shops and farms and farmhouses relaxes people. And certainly, we do anything we can to reduce aggression in the area. There's a quote in a newspaper, and I'm not sure which council member it was, but they were concerned that if we repeal this PUD, it would set a precedence for future business endeavors, that we may withdraw their petitions once they got involved with the development process. But this PUD has been wrong from the beginning. It doesn't belong there. All the statements, why it was even considered to begin with, is beyond me, because a PUD initially states is for the benefit of the community and society, which it in no means is. So turning an RC-8 into an industrial warehouse is just crazy. It's a turning point now. Even beyond this vote, this resolution, which I support, we need to consider heavily what we're gonna do with this beautiful piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you so very, very much for...
It's Colleen Amaral. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Amaral. One moment, we'll call you.
Okay, sorry. I was able to unmute.
Uh huh.
No, no, I was done. She can go ready.
Ms. Amaral, we are ready for you.
Sorry about that. I don't know how that happened, locked me out. My name's Colleen Amaral. I live on Eastern Avenue, and I have lived here along with my family for about 40 years. We're second-generation graduates from Oliver Beach Elementary School, and we firmly support Resolution 1523. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time to share your comments with us. And one more.
Mr. Farley is now on. He just messaged me, so give me one moment. Mr. Farley, you are now on as a panelist. You may unmute and begin your testimony.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. I am speaking today in support of this resolution and want to just commend all of you for putting this forward. We on Ebenezer Road are already jam-packed with traffic, and this only, you know, the use of this PUD and its proposed use would only add to considerable congestion in this area. We have lived here for over five years, and as you all know, the intersections around Ebenezer and 40 are extremely challenging area of congestion and traffic, and I am in full support of mixed use or some other form of recreational use for this property. Thank you.
Well, thank you so very, very much. And I'll give it to you, Councilman Marks, but let me just take an opportunity to thank all the callers who took the time to share their comments with us. We certainly appreciate the delegates coming in and everybody else taking the time to come in. Your comments are very important to us, and you're always welcome here, and this is the best way democracy works, is when people participate. So we thank you very much. Councilman Marks, you have the last word.
I'll just be very brief again. Thank you to all who testified. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your graciousness in allowing the votes to go first, particularly in this matter, and my colleagues for listening to them. Thank you to Delegate Naraki and Delegate Shalaga for coming here in person and expressing your views and for your partnership on this issue. I mean, I think what we've heard today is great clarity from multiple sectors of the community, from our elected officials, from our established residents, from people who've been involved in business issues in eastern Baltimore County. This is a very special part of Baltimore County. It deserves proper planning and collaboration that comes with the master plan process, with the comprehensive zoning map process, and with ongoing efforts to engage all of our stakeholders. That's what we're asking for this council to do: revoke the current planned unit development resolution, move forward on a different path. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary, I'd like to be a co-sponsor. I thought I was, but my name's not on it, so.
Councilman Young?
On, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Understood. I just want to take an opportunity, before we move on, to recognize D'Amico Coleman, who's been interning in my office for the last few weeks. Just finished his junior UMBC studying public administration sociology. Appreciate the time, and you picked an excellent work session to come attend.
Yes.
Mr. Ian Beanland, who was not on earlier when I called him, is on now, and he wanted to let the council know that he is in support of 1523. Did you want me to call upon him, or...
Okay. That's it, unless he wants to share that with us? You already did. It's up to him.
Let me see, because I have to refresh. Yeah, he wasn't on earlier, but he is on now. Mr. Beanland, you are on as a panelist. If you'd like to comment, you may unmute yourself.
Awesome. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool. I had the dial-in because that wasn't working. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. I've been a member of the Chase community for over three decades. I fully support 1523, and pretty much Josh Signs covered everything that our community is dealing with right now. And thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Chair?
Yes. I also, too, I thought I was a co-sponsor as well, and so would like to be added as co-sponsor to 1523.
Yes, sir.
Hey. Moving right along, all right? We're going into high gear now. We appreciate everybody's patience in the audience, waiting for us to get through this. But I thought it was important that we took a chance and went out of order and allowed the citizens to go first, and I think they were all very brief. We got through 33, 34 callers in a short period of time. So next, we will call on Page 19, Chief Joanne Rung. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones and council members, for allowing me to testify. Fire Department is requesting council approval for a budget appropriation in the amount of $2,896,000. These funds are necessary to cover higher-than-anticipated callbacks. During FY '23, the department has experienced a high number of vacancies, which required an increase in callback to ensure station coverage. Internal funds are available from savings and salary, utility, voice and data, motor pool trucks, to partially cover these expenses, and we are very thankful for the Police Department, who unfortunately also had vacancies, but has funds available to allow the transfer as well. That is all, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments from the members? Eric Nun, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll move on to Page 15. Major Dan Kalzensk... Wait a minute. Kalazak. Kalazak. Huh? Kalazak. Sorry about that. Major?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. The Police Department and the administration is looking. This is a lead abatement service and cleaning contract with Atmos Solutions. It's to provide lead abatement services and cleaning to include periodic replacement of ventilation system exhaust filters on a regular basis at our police indoor firearms pistol range. The frequency of service shall be monthly or as directed by the firearms range supervisor. The agreement was awarded through a competitive bid to the low bidder. The term is for one year with four one-year renewal options in the contract. Total compensation may not exceed $680,000 during the entire term of the agreement, including the renewals. Atmos Solutions Incorporated is a Maryland-certified minority business enterprise, so it's a contract to handle our lead abatement.
Thank you very much, Major Kalazak. Any questions or comments from the members? Eric Nun, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Page 72. Danielle Kesnick? Knetz? Is that a battalion chief or captain? I can't see.
Bureau chief.
Bureau chief. Okay, and this is your first time testifying?
Yes, sir.
Well, we welcome you so very, very much. Somebody, give her a hand. Do we still have the first-time cupcakes? They're all gone? Okay. All right, go ahead. That's all right. He might need to give her... Okay. Would you like some bata?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. The Fire Department has put forth the contract in accordance with the Code of Maryland Regulations for an Emergency Services Medical Director. This position has been filled for the last 21 years graciously by Dr. Pollack, who has now accepted a higher position at University of Maryland and is stepping down. So we are looking to fill this position with a part-time, 20-hour-a-week medical director and looking to be able to provide more services for population health and our current eye care program. So this position went out for bid through the procurement process, and the bid was awarded to University of Maryland, who has named Dr. Jeffrey Neusbaum as the physician who would serve if this contract is approved.
Okay. Well, we thank you so much. And Dr. Pollack, it's been a longtime staple here in the county, and I think he's done a fantastic job, and we certainly wish him well in his endeavors, and we will miss him. Is the other doctor here by any chance? No?
He is not here.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bureau Chief Knetz? 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 Okay. Nats. Got it. Okay, thank you so very much. Thanks for coming. Come see us again sometime. All right. Moving right along to Assistant Chief Paul Lertz. Page 83, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, council persons, and thank you for your time. I'm here about Resolution 1623, which authorizes the county to accept a donation of 80 gently-used office chairs from Under Armour Incorporated, valued at $8,000 or $100 per chair. These chairs will be used in facilities throughout the county, and the Fire Department advises that the donated chairs will help offset a portion of the fiscal year 2024 budget for replacement of office chairs, approximately $30,750, the cost of the new chairs that will not need to be purchased.
Hey.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been in several of the county's stations and been concerned about what I see in the way of furniture and some of these chairs, even though they're used, are a step up.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
You seen them?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chief, we thank you so very, very much. Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you. Okay. Let's do one more. And Page 85. This is Resolution 17-23. This is me at updates. It gives out the Patapsco Granite Area Community Plan. Gives the Patapsco Granite Area Association an opportunity to participate and help update the master plan for the Patapsco Valley area. Speakers, no comments. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Ms. Faith Thomas, Real Estate Compliance. Page 63. 4063 and 100 on Page 69.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. The first item, the administration is requesting approval of three contracts to acquire land totaling approximately 4.35 acres for $1,816,600 for the new location of the Essex Public Library. Fiscal Matter 14 is a contract with Sandra E. Kwiatkowski-Datoli for $783,200 for 1.64 acres located at 1517 Old Eastern Avenue. Fiscal Matter 15 is a contract with Mallard Properties LLC for $512,200 for 1.25 acres located at 1519 Old Eastern Avenue. Fiscal Matter 16 is a contract with Michael H. Smith III for $521,200 for 1.64 acres located at 1513 Old Eastern Avenue. The zoning varies by property. For 1517 Old Eastern Avenue, the county's appraisal consultant, S.H. Muller Associates LLC, completed an appraisal of the property effective January 4th, 2023, recommending a value of $782,000. The county's review appraiser concurred with the appraisal, recommending the respective amount as just compensation for the acquisition. The Office of Law Real Estate Compliance Division advised that, following negotiations, the county and the property owner accepted a negotiated price of $783,200. The additional $1,200 relates to funding for cleanup costs and dumpsters. For 1519 Old Eastern Avenue, the county's appraisal consultant, S.L. Muller Associates LLC, completed the appraisal effective January 4th, 2023, recommending a value of $511,000. The county's review appraiser concurred with the appraisal, recommending the respective amount as just compensation. The Office of Law Real Estate Compliance Division advised that, following negotiations, the county and the property owner accepted a negotiated price of $512,200. The additional $1,200 relates to funding for cleanup costs and dumpsters. 1513 Old Eastern Avenue, the county's appraisal consultant completed an appraisal of the property effective January 4th, 2023, recommended a value of $520,000. The county's review appraiser concurred with the appraisal, recommended the respective amount as just compensation. The county and the property owner accepted a negotiated price of $521,000. As of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, the county has expended and encumbered approximately seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars for appraisals related to the proposed acquisitions.
Okay, well, we thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. Always a pleasure. I believe Councilman Crandall has a comment?
I do. Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Chair, if I may, the property owner who was referenced in Ms. Thomas's remarks, she is here, and I believe that she would like to make some remarks to the council.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate you.
And that's, and that is, that is Ms. Sandra Datoli.
Okay, any additional questions or comments for Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas has one more item.
One more item?
I have one more item.
Okay, so.
All right, Sandy, sit down for, sit down for a little, little bit longer.
Ms. Thomas?
The next is an acquisition of a parcel at sixty-seven thirty-eight Windsor Mill Road as part of the Windsor Mill project. The administration is requesting approval of a contract to acquire land in easement access spanning approximately zero point nine-four acres for ten thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars for the construction of a sidewalk along Windsor Mill Road. David and Barbara Murray currently own the property, which is located at sixty-seven thirty-eight Windsor Mill Road in Grenoa. The property is zone DR five point five. The acquired land will be used for highway widening area, including an area in paving, and the easement access is for drainage and utility easement and a revertable slope easement necessary to retain and support the highway and/or adjacent property. The county's staff appraiser completed an appraisal of the property effective October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, recommending the twelve thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars value. After review and analysis, the county's review appraiser concurred with the appraisal, recommending that amount as just compensation. The purchase price includes one thousand five hundred sixty dollars to compensate for adverse impacts to certain site improvements. Additionally, the county will reinstall or replace as necessary. The total zero point nine-four acre property to be acquired, including the land, the revertable slope easement access area, and the drainage and utility easement, is part of a larger zero point two eight, two-acre parcel that is residentially improved with a detached dwelling.
Okay, any questions, comments for Ms. Thomas? Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. We certainly appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
When we sign these papers, you're going to walk out of here with a big chunk of cash handy, would you like a, a security officer, the police officer, to take you to your car? You like cash?
Cash will be fine. Cash is king. I don't do Venmo or any of that.
Mr. Chair, I've gotten to know Ms. Datoli over the years. She doesn't need any help.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
She's, she's good. She can take care of herself. She can take care of herself.
Thank you. Okay, I'll get started, lighten it up from the other l'farge stuff. I'm here to speak in favor of the acquisition of the Old Eastern Avenue properties for a new Baltimore County library. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I would like to thank Councilwoman Todd Crandall and his senior council assistant Doug Anderson for their tireless work for the good of our community, the Seventh District, and bringing me, Sandra Kwiatkowski-Datoli, together with Sonia Alcantara-Antoine, Chief Executive Officer of Baltimore County Library. They made our connection. Councilwoman Crandall and Doug Anderson have willingly worked for, with me for nine years and through meetings and various approaches to bring the best community use of my property to the Seventh District. Sonia Alcantara-Antoine of Baltimore County Library has great vision and forward-thinking for our community, and I thank her for having faith in the Old Eastern Avenue properties as the new site for the library. It's a wonderful piece of property with many logistics and topographical advantages, and that has given my family much joy over the years. I thank Kevin McDonough, President of the Rockaway Beach Association, and Leah Biddinger, President of the Sussex Community Association, for looking out for the good of all of us as a community as well. I am an advocate for Essex. I grew up here and attended St. Clair's School with my four siblings. My siblings went to Kenwood High School and Mount Carmel. My parents, Phil and Ellen Kwiatkowski, worked hard for our Essex community. They volunteered countless hours for our St. Clair's School and Parish, where my father, Phil, headed the maintenance committee, and my mother, Ellen, a Catholic daughter, a nurse, she volunteered cleaning the church, all while raising us five children. I own a construction company, SE Fields Incorporated. I was a member of the Essex Middle River White Marsh Chamber of Commerce, raised my two boys, Lucas, who is here with me today, and Christopher Datoli, here in Essex and visited the library on a regular basis, attended St. Clair's carnivals and Mount Carmel carnivals. We kept our boat as Seneca's, Porter's, Seneca Marina, where me and my young children would take our boat out to Hartnellar Island and catch catfish off of Porter's Pier as well. My mother, Ellen Kwiatkowski, and my friends still reside here in Essex. And my point for giving you all of that, my family background, is that to convey to you how invest, how vested that I am and my late father, Phil Kwiatkowski, and my mother, Ellen Kwiatkowski, who still lives in Essex, how vested we are in this community. The library at this site will serve our community well, and it will be close to schools and churches and residents with giving them easy access to the library. I am just so thankful that this opportunity has come and that the library hopefully will be at that site. It warms my heart. My son said, "Stick to the script, Mom," but it's a very emotional thing for me. So thank you, Sonia Alcantara-Antoine, again, for the library vision, for your library vision for our community, and Councilwoman Todd Crandall and Senior Assistant Doug Anderson for bringing this to table today. I ask that you vote yes on the acquisition of the Old Eastern Avenue properties for the new Baltimore County library. Thank you.
Thank you so very, very much, and I know you have to feel good knowing that this will be a library, and it'll bring tremendous joy to all the citizens of the area.
Absolutely. I'm ecstatic. I thank you so much.
Now, don't go moving to Florida on us. Good, we, we like that.
No, we're not.
This county as well.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're, we're not giving her up. And Mr. Sheriff, if I can have the floor, if I may?
Absolutely.
If I can ask my colleagues and, and those of you here to indulge me for a second. So years ago, we learned of Ms. Datoli and her family, and we were approached by a developer, and I don't know if you remember, some of us were on the council, and we actually did a PUD for this particular property. And it was, it was a PUD for a senior living facility, and the community was a hundred percent behind it. Every community association was, thought it was a great use of a rather underutilized piece of property in Essex. And we thought we had a solution for this particular property. And again, this was, what, Sandy, nine, ten years ago? And we did the legislation, all that work went into it, the community associations put their work into it, community support and the whole thing, and it ended up not working out. And through the years subsequent to that, we kept in touch with Sandy and her family, and at no point did Ms. Datoli say that I want to extract as much as I can out of this property for profit. They obviously had to, the family had to sell the property to make some money, right? They couldn't just give it away. And at no point did they say, "We, we want to develop everything that we can out of this property. We want, we want to extract every single dollar out of this." They said, "We just want the best for Essex," and I think she just expressed that. And, you know, you can really appreciate people that think about their family and think about where they grew up, and think about the legacy that they're going to leave, that you're going to leave, Sandy, you're going to leave for Lucas, so we can get this, this library built, and your family will be able to look at that and say, "You know what? We had a big hand in, in doing that." So I want to continue my story a little bit, if my colleagues will indulge me even a little bit more. So we had the opportunity, when Director Alcantara-Antoine became the Director of Baltimore County Libraries, she decided that she wanted to come and meet with us, and I think she met with all of us when she became director, and we had a conversation. So she joined our office one day, and she had a particular vision for southeastern Baltimore County and what an Essex library might be. And we had the meeting, and I honestly didn't think that much of it. I said, "Okay, this is, this is an impressive lady, and I think the, the, the library system in Baltimore County is in good hands." But she expressed that she would be open to a new location for an Essex library, and it did not occur to me at that time during that meeting that we might have a location. So the meeting ended, and my senior aide, Doug Anderson, who most of you know, he came to me and he said, "What about Sandy Datoli's property there on Joseph Hands Corner in Essex? Would that work?" And I said, "You know what, Doug? I think that might work. I have no idea. Can you talk to Sonia? Can you talk to Sandy and see if that can work out?" And this is just an example of how communication happens and why you need really, really good people around you, because you don't always have the best ideas by yourself. So Doug, thank you for following this thing through and for shepherding this thing through with, with Sandy and, and Director Alcantara-Antoine. You all made this happen, and this is a very, very exciting thing for the community of Essex, a new library. It is a huge thing. So I want to thank the, those involved, Sandy certainly, my aide Doug. I also want to thank the county executive and his administration for following through with this and making this happen. These things don't just happen. There's negotiations that take place, there are different agencies. Madam CAO is nodding in agreement with me. There's a lot that goes into an acquisition such as this, and I am so appreciative of everybody that had something to do with this. Now, with that, I've asked Director Alcantara-Antoine to, to join us. She's online. I don't know if she wants to make a comment. Maybe she just wants to get on with her evening and have me be quiet, I'm not sure. But I did want to make sure to acknowledge her because she, she was a huge part in, in getting us to this point.
Thank you.
Director, there you go. I'll leave, I'll give it to Chris Val Castro, because after, after I acknowledge, I'm, I don't know what I'm doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crandall, and thank you to all the members of the council for giving me the opportunity to testify this evening. As you're aware, Baltimore County Public Library has nineteen locations around the county, and our vision is to have twenty-first century library facilities that are modern, both beautiful and functional, and fully meet the needs of our twenty-first century community. Libraries are places where transformation happens. It's where people can access the tools and the resources that they need to be successful in school, work, and in life. I'm just so thrilled that Councilwoman Crandall and his chief of staff, Doug Anderson, connected me with Sandy Kwiatowski-Datoli, who shares this passion for the Essex community and the, and, and the ability for a library to transform the community, and shared in, in my vision. And we've identified these three parcels of land in Essex that would facilitate that transformation, where we would hope to construct a brand-new library. This site is embedded in a neighborhood, is very walkable, it's close to schools and churches. Libraries are already a community hub, but having a new library in the site would be just the cherry on top of the ice cream, and so we're really excited about bringing the library to that part of Essex and facilitating transformation in that community. So I asked that the council vote yes for the acquisition of, of, of this property so that we can construct a brand-new library.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues and everyone else for my indulgence with my, my soap opera story.
All right, thank you very much. Now, I, I did have, while I'll clap, and thank you for being here, Lucas, we appreciate you being here as well, and, and I did have one quick, I was confused. You told me this story before, but I think you had a doctor's office in? I got the stories wrong?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
I thought you said, that, forget about it. Maybe I, maybe I hit the wrong story.
No, I was telling you about my doctor's appointment, but that falls under HIPAA regulations.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're, we're not going to discuss that.
All right, thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. I'm divulging the confidentiality, I'm, but yes.
Are these properties commercial, the ones, the three we're buying? Are they commercial properties or residential?
Councilman Katz, actually, I'm going to give you my best possible answer, but don't quote me. I think the, the parcels are a mix of residential, there might be a little bit of a commercial zone there, but mostly residential, but if you, if you know this area at all, this is a section of Old Eastern Avenue between Route seven oh two, which is a state, state road, and Back River Neck Road, and that is pretty much a, 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 a commercial corridor. The, the parcels that are in question today and part of our agenda used to be residential, but they have fallen out of utilization, and residential probably is the most appropriate use for this particular piece of land in Essex currently, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey. Councilman Marks?
I just want to thank Councilman Crandall. Mr. Anderson, I want to thank you as well, the county executive and library director for all their work on this. This will have regional effects. This will help people in Middle River as well, and you're to be commended for your leadership in getting this done.
Well, and Councilman Marks, thank you for your advocacy as well. I know that you, well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for your advocacy on this project as well, sir.
I mean, I can't think of a more important addition to a community than a beautiful library. It's no longer about just books, computers, and you name it. Did you know that you can borrow a laptop and a hotspot for up to six months? Heard it here? Hopefully not first, but you heard it here first. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you so very much, ma'am, and thank you, Lucas. And now we will move on to, let me see, where am I? How about we move on to Walt Pesterfield, page twenty-three, and then Ms. Walker, then next.
The Department of Corrections is requesting approval of a general fund budget appropriation transfer, transport, transfer totaling six hundred thousand dollars. Due to a high turnover rate in the correctional officer positions and the requirement of mandatory overtime required to ensure appropriate coverage, we have incurred a substantial amount of overtime cost. This has caused an overtime up to, that is totaling three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We also have incurred an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our food service contract with Airmark. This was due to the average inmate population that increased from a daily average in twenty-twenty-two of nine hundred inmates to our present averages of eleven hundred and fifty. We are requesting this funding of six hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka?
Mr. Pesterfield, I just want to say that I saw one of your TV spots for recruiting correctional officers. It was on WJZ, I think?
Correct.
And it was really good, and so just I'll repeat what I saw. There's a five thousand dollar bonus?
That's right.
To sign up to be a correctional officer?
That is correct.
Okay.
If you know, if you know anybody? If you know, if you know anybody, tell them, please.
Will do.
And W M A R TV started Saturday with that commercial also. ABC.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm certain everyone won't make it. Some people will have the best intentions, but they may not have the right stuff.
That is correct.
Let me just say, if they can't make it, tell them we have cross and God positions as well.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Serious.
Any more questions? I, I had one quick question.
Sure.
Director Pesterfield, you said we, we were at 900 inmates. Was that last year or the year before, 20?
Twenty, 2021. Obviously, when the.
Pandemic.
Pandemic hit, numbers drastically went down in an effort to get those down. And they were actually down to 700 at one point.
Wow.
And then they slowly went up around the 800, 900 mark. And then we had about 1,000. I think we had today, we're at, we had 1,0190.
What's our capacity there? Are we?
Around 1,500.
Fifty, okay.
We don't, we don't want that.
No, I understand. I'm not wishing that.
Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for an ongoing conversation about staffing. I just would be curious, because you don't have to answer now. I have the answer, that's great. Where along the process are applicants getting, you know, finding out that they're not eligible for the position? I'd just be interested, and it's a long, it, it also applies to other agencies, but since we're discussing it now in your front office, I just wanted to bring up that I'd be interested.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's the background check as far as running the criminal history. Sometime it's, it's just, you know, that they're not fit for the job physically. And so that knocks some of those folks out.
Appreciate it. In private and after the hearing, love to get some numbers or some data just related to where in that process, because I'd like to marry it up to some of the other agency.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Pesterfield. We thank you so very, very much.
I think one more item, sir.
He has another, aren't you?
Yes.
Wait a minute. This is other item.
I think it's, I think it's FM 20, page 78.
Oh, you talked about that already, right? About the food?
Two separate items. One is existing contract and, and the one is the extended contract.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought you talked about the food already.
It was about food. So in this part, the Department of Corrections is requesting council approval to amend the current contract with Airmark Correctional Services to provide food services to the intake population at Baltimore County Detention Center. Airmark has been providing food services for the county since 2013. The current contract will expire June 30, 2023, with no additional renewals. Though request for proposal P 320, the council has re-selected Airmark Correctional Services as the awardee for these services. However, additional time is needed to fully negotiate the terms and conditions of the new agreement. Therefore, the Department of Corrections respectfully requests an extension of the current agreement through March 31, 2024, or upon the date the new agreement has been executed pursuant to the request for proposal, whichever is earlier date. All of the terms, conditions, and provisions of the agreements will remain in effect.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members? And how long is the contract going to be good for?
It will go through July 1, 2023, through March 31, 2024.
Right. That's the time they're, to get a new one.
Correct.
And then once we get the new one, how long will we be looking?
Those are expected anywhere three to five years.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move right along to Ms. Perry Walker, page 12. Number one you want, Ms. Walker.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with probative governmental services to provide temporary personnel services to assist with the county's proactive pre-billing analysis processes to help us reduce the total number of billing errors associated with customer service contracts generated after the tax billing occurs. The total compensation for this cannot exceed $172,000 for the entire three-year, three-month term, including the extension period. The contractor specifically will provide two full-time temporary staff clerical and office automation assistant to, for approximately 10 weeks per year to pre-scrub, pre-scrub our metropolitan district annual billing data. They'll handle some billing inquiries and help us to diminish some of the customer inquiries that we have. We typically do this, we've been doing this for the last two years, where we bring them in a few weeks early. We analyze all of the bills that come in. And if there's over 300% increase from the previous year, we actively reach out to those customers to let them know you need to call us so that you can come in before it gets onto your tax bill. And we're asking for approval to hire these two temporary employees to help us assist in that process.
Well, I thank you so much for doing it because, you know, once these things get on the tax bill.
Yep.
Sometimes people don't know it. They find out first when their bank lets them know that there's a problem with the escrow.
That's right.
And that's when they have problems. So I thank you so much. And I appreciate the administration for taking the effort to try to get ahead of it. Because these are the type of surprises that really hurt hard-working families in Baltimore County.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, council members. You are correct, Chairman Jones. Many of the efforts that the metro team have incorporated are to do just that, to, with, with the help of the individuals who come on board, we've seen a significant decrease in complaints because then they understand what's what. And then we can determine the, what's happening with, with the water, you know, what's causing it, leak, et cetera. It reduces the impact on O B F as well in terms of having to go back and make modifications. But what the department also implemented was an upfront analysis where we send letters proactively to say, your, your bill appears to be much higher than previous years, or if it's lower as well, to try to engage with the, the residents to try to address this. It also helps and is in conjunction with the legislation that you pass that give the taxpayers the opportunity to have a longer period of time to make modifications and to appeal their tax bills. So this was just one of multiple steps. And we hope that the evidence of effectiveness is that the amount of requests or inquiries or complaints have reduced for you all in this area.
Well, we appreciate it very much. And like I said, you brought it up. I passed some legislation along with my colleagues, and it was serious problems that people were having.
Absolutely.
And I think that this is an excellent step to help alleviate that. And, you know, nobody, no one around here wants to see somebody in financial problems and risking their home. So I appreciate it very much. It'd be money well spent. Any questions or comments from the members? Councilman Crandall?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Sure.
Director Walker, you're certainly aware through our emails to, you know, to your, your office and to the metro district that we face some challenges like I think most of us have dealt with, with our constituents. I'm just wondering if, I'm in the wrong business. 57, 51 an hour? Is that what it costs to figure this stuff out? Really? I'm not trying to be flip, but, I mean, we, 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 we've dealt with problems in the metro district for years now. We're getting constituents with bills that are in, they, they, they own a 1,500 square foot home. They're getting a bill without a leak for $15,000. And we somehow can't work these things out. So is this 57, 51 an hour for these couple of folks? Are we going to be able to get some progress on this stuff?
So yes, sir. Part of, part of the concern is that the short amount of time, the window that we have to actually review over 250,000 bills that come in, we try to analyze it and make sure that we're only reviewing those that are over the 300%. But we don't have much time. So we don't have the staff on board, and we need some specialized staff to be able to actually look at those bills. So it was very intentional for the staff that we're trying to get to look at these bills and the short amount of time that we have in order to look at the bills to try to decrease the number of complaints is why we're going this route.
Well, I am certainly hopeful that, that, that we're able to come to resolution on this. I think it's been going on for just, just way too long, which is why I think the council wanted the General Assembly to look at the creation of a regional water authority so that we could look at a different way of administering and, and maintaining our infrastructure where it's related to water. And I, I know you're all about it, and I know you're on top of it. It's just, it, it, it seems that, you know, every, every, every summer, this stuff comes out, and this is what we're dealing with.
And it's for a very short amount of time. It's not, it's only for a 10-week period while we, we're trying to catch it before the bills go out. And we keep them on for just a couple of weeks after the bills go out to help us scrub the information. So it's not for a long, for a very long period of time.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized? Councilmember Crandall, the other reason why this rate is this, this is the rate, because this particular contractor has been able to provide us with the individual, with the technical knowledge that's needed. The, the department has utilized this process for the last three years, when we were trying to be proactive, preemptive, because every year we have to put the tax bills on the street July 1. So we take this time period to really proactively look at these bills, send letters, do follow-ups. That was not happening prior to, you know, instituting this, this process. It's very difficult to get an employee off the street, someone off the street, who's only going to stay for a 10-week period with the skill sets we need. So that's one reason why the, the hourly rate is so high, because you do have to have specific technical skills about this particular subject matter. And it's very difficult to get somebody to come for 10 weeks only each year to do this. We just needed to renew the contract to get the technical experts that we need. That's why the, the dollar rate, I mean, the hourly rate is higher. And yes, we have seen progress, because this is not our first year. If it wasn't successful, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have continued to do it. But we absolutely see more resolution prior to the tax bills going out than we did without using this early intervention strategy. We have done this. This is going, this kind of thing needs to be, the preemptive engagement part needs to happen every year because quirky things happen with people's water. There's a leak, they don't know about it. But by analyzing, we run, we run a analysis on all of the 250,000 accounts, 220,000. Correct. 220,000 accounts to see where the anomalies are now. We weren't doing that before. We pull the anomalies out, we sort them out. 300 degree, 300% increase, we definitely jump on those because that's where you would find a crazy account of $15,000 for, for a tax bill. So that's why we're saying these kinds of early interventions, business processes and strategies really have assisted in reducing some of the challenges that we were seeing, that the department just simply can't manage all of that for a 10-week period.
And I certainly appreciate the, the, the proactive approach. I think it's a necessary approach. Maybe we can do better on the, on the backend. And I know our office has worked with, I think, Director Walker's office and, and others in Baltimore County to try to figure out how we can do that so we can try to alleviate some of these bills that maybe the preemptive proactive process didn't catch. So I, I appreciate the effort. Just had to bring it up.
Yes, sir. We understand. But I just wanted you to know why that hourly rate was, was higher than we would expect. We just can't get people off the street to come in and do this for 10, for 10 weeks.
I'm kind of wishing I knew how to do it.
Likewise.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam C E O. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. We can change the rules so you can have a part-time job doing it. Oh, already applied? Okay. All right. Standing in line. Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. And sorry to hold you so long. And next, we'll move on to Director Lafferty. Page 34. Director Lafferty, how are you?
Doing well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, good evening. Administration is requesting approval to acquire perpetual conservation east meant on approximately 18.17 acres of land for $93,330 pursuant to the county's rural legacy program. Gene R. Worthy, LLC is the current property owner. And this property is located on Greenspring Avenue in Owings Mills in District 2. Currently zoned RC 2, RC 4, and RC 5. We believe that this land went, because of the calculated value of 5,137 acres, excuse me, dollars per acre, will add a valuable, provide a valuable asset not only in the Upper Co. Worthington and Sparks Agricultural Priority Preservation Area, but also because it is a subject then to the steed that will prevent the property from being developed in the future. Excuse me, it's partially wooded and partially farmed at this point in time. Adding this would increase our acreage well above the 70,170, 70 acres that we currently have in preservation. And with that, ask approval for this acquisition.
Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Director Lafferty.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Ms. Laura Raleigh. Page 37.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of an adult daycare contract with Golden Days East Adult Medical Daycare Center for our senior care program. The adult day services program is funded by the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland Department of Aging to subsidize adult daycare services to county residents. This contract will then come in line with the other contracts that we brought before the council several years ago. So it's just one additional one to add to the offerings we have on the east side of the county.
Okay. Thank you very much. Was that, we're going to move on to the next contract? Any questions, comments from the members? No? And move on to page forty?
The administration's requesting approval of twenty-nine in-home healthcare service contracts for fiscal year 2024 with our senior care program. These contracts provide personal care, in-home respite care, and chore services to low and moderate-income, homebound seniors to avoid nursing home placement. In FY twenty-two, we serve four-hundred-and-four clients and expect to do approximately the same. These are all vendors that were solicited from the list of those who are licensed to operate in the Baltimore County area. And as long as they meet the criteria for having a contract with us, then they are put on the list. And then our consumers are able to choose from these providers, when they are eligible, which ones they'd like to provide the services to them.
Well, any questions, comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman?
Thank you. I know Broadmead now provides services to try to help people remain in their homes. Is the county any program?
The, the program that they operate called Communities for Life is through the Maryland Department of Aging. And we have a relationship there that we can make referrals to them, but we do not fund the program.
Not, I meant involvement, yet I'm not talking about.
Yeah, just, we can make referrals for those who are appropriate for the services.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Batoka?
Question, Ms. Raleigh. For both the last two items, I know we've been, we're doing it at the same level from last year to this year. And I just wonder with, with people living longer and seniors having a longer life expectancy, is this an area that we're looking long-range to, to grow the, the county's investment in this area?
Well, these are all state and federally funded programs right now, so we try and use every last dollar we get from the state. It is something we can always look to enhance, but at this time, it's state-funded.
Something I should talk to our state partners about.
There you go.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you very much, Director Raleigh. Thank you so much for hanging in the air. Sorry about the timing. Next we'll move on to Direct, Dr. Jennifer Lynch, Acting Director of the Department of Economic and Workforce Development, page forty-four.
With me tonight, I also have Melissa Hop from CCBC who'll be able to answer questions afterwards.
Okay.
Dear Chairman and, oop, Councilmen and Chairman and Councilmembers, I sit before you today to request retroactive approval for sublease agreement with CCBC for the American Job Center located at thirty-six, thirty-seven, off at Road in Randalls Town. The American Job Center's offer employment services to unemployed or underemployed residents as outlined in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of two thousand and fourteen, more commonly known as WEOWA. Our centers offer onsite courses, enrollment support in the Maryland Workforce Exchange, employment consultation, barrier analysis and support, and more. The lease term is from July one, two thousand and twenty-one, and will continue through July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. A lease at this location was first approved by the council in two thousand and ten. At that time, the county paid for the building, the build-out of the space and then leased the space at no cost. In two thousand and twenty-one, Randalls Town Plaza Associates and CCBC engaged in a lease extension through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and then entered into a second amendment to extend the lease for an additional seven years through two thousand and twenty-eight. As part of the second amendment, Baltimore County government was identified as a subleasing and the overall space was reduced significantly. The rent due for FY twenty-two will be paid from county ARPA funds in the amount of one-hundred-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-six dollars. The rent due for FY twenty-three in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars will be paid from the department's general fund operating budget. And rent beyond two thousand and twenty-three will be paid with WEOWA or other funds. I can pause here for questions about this agreement, or I can move on to the second at your choosing.
We certainly welcome the American Job Center being there, providing great service to the citizens. Any questions or comments from anyone? Nope. Move on to the next one, Dr. Lynch.
Second, wonderful. The second request is a retroactive approval of a sublease agreement with CCBC for the American Job Center located at one-one-one-zero-one McCormick Road in Hunt Valley. This initial lease was signed by the council in two thousand and six for a fifteen-year term. CCBC has renegotiated that lease and due serves as a subleasing. The term, the lease term from October one, two thousand and twenty-one, and it will continue for six years through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-seven, with an option to extend through to two thousand and thirty-one. The cost of rent for fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars for the extension year, and it will increase each year. We will continue to pay for forty percent of the shared classroom space, the dedicated space, ten percent of the base rate amount for common area maintenance, and ten percent of the property security costs. The total cost will be three-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars for the, for the initial six-year term, and these payments will be paid through our WEOWA grants.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lynch. Any question, comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you very, very much. Move on to page fifty-four and fifty-eight.
Good to be Vice President Hop. Wanted to say hi, since you sat through all this.
Now you see the way democracy works around here. Thank you so much for joining us. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Take away, page fifty-four.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Jones and members of the council. The administration is seeking your approval for a two-year contract with affiliate Sante Group. This contract is for our Baltimore County's Crisis Response System. The Crisis Response System is a partnership between Baltimore County Health Department, Bureau of Behavioral Health, the County Police Department, and the vendor affiliate Sante Group. The goal of the Crisis Response System is to provide an accessible, coordinated, and comprehensive system of behavioral health emergency services for Baltimore County to fill service gaps in the emergency system, offering alternatives to emergency room, which complement but are not duplicate, duplicates of existing community services and are short-term and time-limited. Baltimore County's Crisis Response System services are available for all residents of Baltimore County at no cost. They include our hotline, mobile crisis team, in-home intervention team, urgent care, our nine-one-one call center clinician program, and crisis intervention team, and also the local nine-eight-eight call center for the National Suicide Line. The two-year contract is, amounts to five-million-one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars per year with three optional one-year renewals for a total compensation of twenty-five-million-seven-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. And I'd be happy to take any questions on this contract.
Any questions or comments from the members? They're providing a valuable service, Mr. Richardson, and we certainly appreciate an expensive service nonetheless, but very important. Next contract, please.
The next contract is.
Page fifty-eight.
Yes. The administration is seeking a third amendment to our non-emergency medical transportation services contract. The contract is in the amount of three-million-four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, and it is funded by, fifty percent by the Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services and the Maryland Department of Health. Under this contract amendment, the county will continue to be able to provide transportation to Medicare-eligible recipients for life-sustaining medical care, including dialysis, substance use disorder medication, and counseling. And I'll be happy to take any questions on this contract.
Mr. Richardson, I'm going to retract my statement. I said it was expensive, the twenty-five million. It is, is worth every penny, especially when we think about people that are under duress, the damage they can do here in Baltimore County. So when they need help, we have to be there to provide that help for them. Any questions, comments from the members? Nope. I guess we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Next we'll move on to Ms. Deb Schindel. Deb, it's always a pleasure. You are wearing orange for the Orioles?
I am.
Good for you.
Absolutely supporting Maryland, right? That and the Ravens. Good evening, everyone. Members of the council, president, and members, forgive me, I have a cold, so forgive me if, if I sound a little hoarse. I also have Matt Carpenter here, Deputy of OBF, in case you have any questions in regard to the BAT that we're going to be requesting, particularly because he's the energy expert. The administration is requesting approval of a general fund budget appropriation transfer of BAT totaling in three-million-seven-hundred from the Department of Public Works and Transportation, Bureau of Highways, and Equipment Maintenance Storm Emergency Program to property management, building operations, and maintenance that requires three-million-two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. Building maintenance is two-hundred-and-fifty, and grounds maintenance and rec sites a hundred-and-sixty-thousand for the programs. This fund, these funds will be used to cover unexpected and rising utilities costs, higher than anticipated salaries, equipment, maintenance, and fuel, motor fuel cost. We appreciate your consideration in this request, and we can take any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments from the members? Hearing none. Move on to page seventy-five, next contract.
Thank you. The administration is requesting an approval of a contract with Echo Tone LLC to provide approximately point-oh-nine-four acres of non-title wetland migration credits for the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-and-forty-five dollars related to the construction of the new Sparrows Point Park at Trade Point Atlantic Site. The contract commenced upon the execution of the agreement here, approved by the county council. This is the most effective way for us to provide the migration requirements that is to required, required to purchase wetland migrate, migration bank credits. This banking migration is preferred method by not only the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, but the MDE. And I'm willing to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments from the members? Believe it was a couple of weeks ago, I gave instructions on how to make a wetland.
Let me recognize, uh, this here. Council, Councilmember Crandall, this is the one.
Yes.
When we were talking, and again, it is coming to, we need to come to you for it because we had requested from the state a waiver and it was not granted. So then we have to now do the purchase.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam CEO. And Ms. Schindel, I'm, I'm not going to grill you because I think we learned about two weeks ago what this whole thing was about. And I am pretty convinced that Chairman Jones has no idea how to build a wetland.
Come on, we'll teach you how to do that.
So I don't, I don't know if you can build a wetlands by going on the Google and then thinking you know what you're doing. But I do, I do appreciate your effort and the administration's effort on the continuation of this very exciting project in the, in the seventh district. So thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Room right along, Director Gutwold, page eleven, Bill thirty-six dash twenty-two, Cannabis on you, Director Gutwold?
I'm sorry.
Cannabis?
Yes, cannabis.
He doesn't look stoned.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Bill thirty-six twenty-three amends existing provisions in the county code and zoning regulations concerning medical cannabis facilities so as to make those provisions equally applicable to adult-use cannabis facilities in order to account for the statewide legalization of adult-use cannabis. Specifically, the bill strikes the word "medical" from references to a medical cannabis facility, dispensary, grower, and processor. The definition of these terms are also updated to reflect recent changes in state regulations. Last, the bill adds specific COMAR cross-references to relevant sections and definitions regarding adult-use cannabis.
We would call this a tweak.
Exactly.
A little tweak.
Housekeeping.
Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Casman?
With the medicinal use of marijuana, those centers have to be so far from an adult or kindergarten facility, are they still?
Yeah, the, the, all the, all the regulations that you have in the zoning codes are staying. I know there is one amendment because the state, we can't be more stricter than, we can be more lenient than that. So the distance between existing cannabis dispensaries has got, I think we have it at twenty-five-hundred, it has to be reduced to a thousand, but the daycares, the schools, all of that stays the same.
Adult daycare.
Yeah, I can't remember all, but all this, yeah.
Okay.
And daycare, yes, I'm sorry. Yep.
Councilman Batoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gutwold, does this mean that all of the medical cannabis stores right now, the centers right now, would they convert automatically to recreational cannabis?
Not automatically, they still have to get licensed, but the, their, July first, they can apply. That's why we're trying to get, you know, where we, they can be legally there from a zoning regulated point because then they can be licensed there.
And they apply prior to July one, or they have to wait till July one for?
I think it's July first when they start issuing them. I don't, is that correct?
Yes. July one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And now, and now bill is here at a local level, just catching up to where the state is so that the facilities here in Baltimore County can in fact take advantage, if they are eligible, of the state licenses to sell recreational cannabis.
Yeah, um, tell me with this, with the state of Maryland, the medicinal marijuana dispensaries, there can be so many in each legislative district.
There, there's, there's, yes, it is regulated by that.
And what is the number?
I know it used to be two in each senate district.
Right. Do you know what it is with?
I do not know off the top of my head. I don't know. We'll find, yeah, we'll find out. We'll get you the number.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Mark?
That always struck me as odd because the senate districts change according to redistricting, right? So the original bill passed before the last redistricting, so just, it seemed like a very arbitrary standard.
Yeah. And the other strange thing is it's actually in two different parts of the state code, the medical versus the adult use. So we'll have to look at that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So Director Gutwold, so just so we're clear, we legislated several years ago when medical cannabis became legal in the state of Maryland, we, as a council, we legislated the zoning classifications, regulations where those dispensaries could be.
Correct.
So not every medical licensed medical cannabis dispensary can, is going to get a recreational license, correct? Some will, some may not.
True.
Right? And as my colleagues remarked, the original plan was two medical cannabis dispensaries per state legislative district.
Mm-hmm.
Do, and I guess I'm following one with my other que, with my other, my colleague's other question. Do we know, do you know offhand, or do we, or can you find out for us how many recreational cannabis license, licenses are available, are, and if?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to jump with that.
In the state, or is it per legislative district? Is it the same way that the state came up with the plan for, for medical cannabis, or is recreational quite different?
I, to my knowledge, I don't think they restricted it, but we are restricting it by zoning for the recreational. It was, but I will double-check on that.
Okay. So can, did the state, to your knowledge, I'm not putting you on the spot because I don't think this is your, your purview necessarily, but did the state say, this is how many licenses, recreational licenses that we're going to?
I have to double-check.
Distribute, or you're, you don't?
I, we will double-check and get an answer for you on that. I'm not positive, but the state.
Okay. Like I said, I, like, I don't mean to put you on the spot, not your purview, just curious because medical was different and now we're moving into recreational and it seems like we're moving. seems like we're moving, the state at least is moving at a, at a pace that we might not necessarily be ready for on the local level on, on a few different matters.
Yeah, I do, I do know a number of, of the medical ones know that they can convert to adult, what they call adult use or recreational, and they have inquired about what we're going to do. So I know those, there's several medical ones that will convert to recreational, so.
Okay.
Are interested in that, yeah.
Okay.
What did you say?
Well, I.
Thank you, Mr. Gutwold.
Sure. Sure. So let me see here, let me, this may be helpful. Initially, the state approved one hundred and two medical cannabis dispensary licenses. Now, legislation as finalized by the two committees calls for seventy-five grower licenses, one hundred processor licenses and three hundred dispensary licenses. So that would tell me this want to be, a hundred and two was, would fit in line with the two per senatorial district, but now three hundred, assuming you may, I don't know how they came up with the three hundred, but three hundred is certainly more than a hundred and two, so you may be able to get at least probably two more in those districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Gutwold, so do we know if, is there a specific zoning classification that allows for recreational marijuana?
Well, what we did was everything that, where, so the medical cannabis facilities, just dispensaries were specifically identified in specific zoning classifications, depending upon what, you know, whether you're a grower, whether you're a dispensary. We're keeping that the same for the adult-use cannabis. So where you restricted it in zoning classifications for medical, we're restricting it in the same places for adult use.
Is, is it like a BR zone or BM zone?
I think some, most of them are like an ML, you know, and some of them are like a BM. I had it here a second ago and I lost it.
Well, let me ask, I'll just, you don't have to say.
Yeah, it's BR, BM, BLR, ML, O-three, O-three zones for a dispensary. And then it allows it, and then it restricts it within certain feet of if you're within the private elementary school, middle school or high school, a public or private. So, yeah, we, it's, it's does, heavy commercial and industrial zones is what it looks like.
The reason I'm asking is it'd be great if we could get some specific guidance on this because in September, actually August of this year, you can prefile for comprehensive zoning map process requests. And so I just wonder the impact of, I guess, prefiling in August and filing in September. And so I'm asking because I just wonder if we'll have zoning classification requests in this cycle of the CZMP that relate to the ability, the permission to, to sell recreational cannabis. And so it'd be good to be armed with information as we approach that, the twenty twenty-three CZMP or twenty twenty-four CZMP.
Not quite sure I follow you.
So let's say there's an operator that is, you know, that wants to sell recreational cannabis at a specific location, but doesn't currently have the zoning for that. So that operator might require, might request a zoning reclassification in the upcoming CZMP to be able to, to have a recreational medical marijuana business. So it'd be helpful to us to understand what zoning classifications where it's permitted so that we can have the right use in the right place. And that's, I guess, the responsibility for county council members during the CZMP is to have the right use in the right place. And so having that additional guidance would be really helpful.
Okay.
I, I don't want to interrupt, but we would be happy to provide you with that information as, as CZMP unfolds and you get approached, we can certainly give you advice on where it is permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Boswick. And the reason I bring it up is because with a, a new product and a new way to, to have commerce with that product, you may recall with industrial hemp and agriculture industry, we had lots of questions that came up and lots of surprises that we were able to tamp down, but I just want to be armed with information so that when we approach the upcoming CZMP, that there are fewer surprises and we can make deliberate decisions that make sense for the community and for commercial centers.
Definitely understand, and the previous bill that Mr. Crandall alluded to for, that was focused on medical, laid it out pretty well where it could go in terms of zoning by right or by special exception, so we can definitely provide you with that roadmap when the time comes.
And I'll point out with industrial hemp, Mr. Phillips did a great job in offering guidance on those issues that came with the community, second district.
And just to be, just to be fair, I know it's at three hundred dispensaries, they also have these things called micro growers, micro processors and micro distributors without brick and mortar stores. Go right ahead.
So following along with Councilman Patoka's line of questioning, I know Mr. Benjamin loves when I make requests of, of his office. So I was just chatting with my, my colleagues and I think that there's a general unfamiliarity that we have with the state legislation that was passed. So if we could get our attorneys to give us some clarification on what the state law is, because there, in just, again, in just chatting with my colleagues, that state law in the, the instance of recreational cannabis may have superseded our land use authority. So, and I'm not certain of that, so as we head into this, this piece of legislation, I think that we should, we should be clear on what our authorities are and what the, the state said as far as where this particular product can, can be sold. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'd be great to look at that, Councilman Crandall, and give you feedback on that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very familiar with the medicinal bill, but know very little about the recreational bill from the state. There's four medicinal dispensaries along your beltway up. And a owner of a medicinal dispensary also get a recreational license?
Yes.
And coexist? So I assume that the price of the recreational would be higher than the price of the medicinal?
I would not be subject to that, I would, I would know.
Well, I know there's state taxes on the.
That's true.
Recreational.
Not on the medical, correct.
Not on the medicinal, so I'm sure they're, they're higher. So, thank you.
Sure. For anybody who wants to know is House Bill five five six and Senate Bill five sixteen. So any additional questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Director Gutwold. Next we move on to Director Hickey. There's your taxes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Page ten, send on open.
Yes.
All right. I'm here on behalf of the administration requesting a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling one million one hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and eight dollars for the emergency rental assistance program two gifts and grants fund program. These funds will be used primarily to provide rent and utility assistance to eligible Baltimore County tenants who continue to be impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We estimate these funds will allow DHCD to serve at least ninety additional households, mainly consisting of those who have pending rental assistance applications already with the county. We may have had to decline for lack of federal money, which has been running out for the past several months. The good backstory here is that in anticipation of exhausting our federal ERA one and two funds, which we did pretty efficiently, balanced against the need, we wrote a letter to Treasury asking them for additional funds. When they did the pass-through of national reallocation for other jurisdictions that had not spent earlier funds in a timely manner, we were surprised to be awarded 1.15 million, but I take it as a real testament to our team, our nonprofit partners, all of you and your referrals in getting this money out quickly. So we essentially have another 1.15 million to spend directly on the applications we'd already received, but would have been out of money. So this will keep us going for another, another couple of months.
Okay, well, we thank you so much, Director Hickey. You and your team has done a fantastic job distributing the funds. I'm going to ask my colleagues first, any questions or comments? And then I do have one for you. I had somebody ask me the other day, they said, I hear so much about a lack of housing, a lack of housing, a lack of housing. And they said, is it that we don't have enough housing or people just can't afford the housing that is available?
It's a big both. We have a lack of housing across the board at all income levels and the housing that had been traditionally affordable or naturally affordable due to rent increases and other issues has become less affordable, pricing out, people are getting priced out of the market at all different levels, including seniors.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Next we move on to Kevin Reed, page four.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. Bill thirty-four twenty-three is a request from the administration that basically amends the employees' retirement system in two different ways. First, it offers, regarding correctional officers, it offers them an option seven spousal benefit. And these changes are designed to be nearly cost neutral and were agreed upon by the correctional officers during union negotiations. So the bill that will require that all pay Schedule One C members contribute an additional one percent to the employees' retirement system effective July one, twenty twenty-three, in turn, effective July one, twenty twenty-six, all pay Schedule One C members who have completed at least twenty-five years of credible service will be entitled to the option seven fifty percent spousal benefit at no cost to the employee in retirement, provided the member meets the thirty-six month contribution requirement to pay the option seven. The One C member who retires between July one, twenty twenty-three and June thirty, twenty twenty-six may also purchase the option seven benefit by paying a post-tax lump sum equivalent to the additional one percent during that period and the period they, they retire. The second thing this bill does is decouples and removes the requirement for new employees to undergo a physical in order to join the employees' retirement system. Of course, public safety and certain safety sensitive positions in the county will still be required as part of their employment to undergo physicals, but it just decouples it from the ability to join the retirement system for, to streamline and ease hiring processes.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the members? I'll give you a heads up, Director Reed, this is an issue we talked about, we said, I'll talk to you about it tomorrow, I guess. Yes, Director, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, I wanted to just add with respect to the decoupling of the physical, when we did the historical research on that, chairman and council members, that goes back to nineteen forty-two. That, that, we have the historical document that ties having a, a physical, which is here and now, to being able to enter the pension program. And our, our, what that does for us, that everybody who comes into Baltimore County government has to have a physical. We are the only jurisdiction that I know of, that, that does that. It does require, now this doesn't change at all, sensitive positions, sensitive, all sensitive positions, and we went through an exercise in having each of the departments identify sensitive positions. They have to have a physical, that, that's not changing at all. But for every single person, one hundred percent to have a physical, we're the only jurisdiction that does that. The other thing is having it tied to whether or not a person can enter the pension program. So our question is, to, to, to what end? What does having a physical when you join county government, how does that impact thirty-plus years later? It's, it's illogical. I've never seen it and I have been at the federal level, I've been at the state level, and I've worked at the municipal level in three different jurisdictions, have never seen it. And we're trying to streamline the onboarding process because onboarding gets backed up sometimes because of the number of people who have to have the physicals. So we prioritize, we absolutely prioritize the public safety sector because we need them to go first because of all of the, you know, the vacancies. But then that backs other people from coming onboard or having to do a workaround with a, a contingency waiver to say, you are hired, you can start, but you have to have a physical. It's, business process wise, it's illogical and it's not in the county's best interest, interest that we can find no logical reason to do something that started in nineteen forty-two. But no, it's, it's, it's no background, it's no research, it's no analysis, it just says, the document we found says, we're going to do this, didn't it, Kevin? It just says, we're going to do this. And we've been doing it ever since.
Yeah.
Okay. Madam CEO, wouldn't?
It's nothing like, go ahead, I'm sorry, sorry.
Didn't mean to.
No, go ahead.
Wouldn't it, I agree, like, it's almost like if someone was unhealthy, they would potentially pay into the system and never collect. So I, I, I've never understood why, why we cared if someone was, unless, unless it has to do with disability payments or something.
Well, I still say at the, the beginning of the, a person's career, wherever that is, if you're coming into government, tying this to my ability to go into the pension, so what, so what happens if I do have a disability? I mean, if I, if I, if I take the physical, have we ever stopped anybody from going into the pension program for any reason? Historically, we look back and you can't see that. I mean, to what end? I mean, you have somebody do something, we spend the money to do it.
Right, and how much are we spending on physicals a year for, for that particular requirement?
We have that number, I don't have it with me at the moment, Councilmember Urteil, I'm just trying to look at this as a public manager and procedurally, because you do things for a purpose, and so you're supposed to ask, to what end do you do something? There's no historical record of why, it's just there and it's coupled, we wanted to discontinue it, but we couldn't discontinue it because when we did the research, it was brought to our attention that it's tied to the ability to enter the pension system. Now, had we known that when we adjusted the pension system legislation last year, we would have dealt with it then, but we didn't, we didn't know that it was tied to it. But thank God, we have people who have historical memory and records to say, oh, I, I got this, I can show you this thing and I'll be happy to, we'll be happy to send it to you, it goes back to nineteen forty-two.
Is there a life insurance benefit for the pension? So if someone, theoretically, if someone entered the pension, they're twenty-eight years old and they die at thirty-four, they're probably never going to collect, I mean, maybe a family member collects on it, but they, do they get a, a big lump sum death benefit?
There's a life insurance product and, and a benefit that employees elect to have, but that's separate and apart.
That's not part of the pension.
No, it's separate and apart.
Theoretically, that wouldn't be the county fund paying it anyway, it would be an insurance.
That's separate and apart, the life insurance part of it, other than, you know, I can't get into technical details about disability side of things, but that's not a pension. Your pension is one product and life insurance is something else. There's no historical record as to what the rationale was in nineteen forty-two when the council. when the counties, when the counties started this. And we have continued to do it. It's on, it's on the records. So we have continued to do it for 100% of all employees, and nobody seems to understand why. But when I benchmark against other government entities, and we're the only entity doing this, you have to question the logic and the investment and the resource, and to what end? That is a, a staple public manager's question. To what end are we doing this? And we have none.
Well, looks like we have 80 years of, uh, tradition unimpeded by progress.
Mr. Chair. Yes. Uh, it seems, now, I can understand, uh, 40 years ago, you have a pre-existing condition because that can affect your health insurance premiums back then. But you're saying that it's simply related to the retirement system?
It's related to the retirement system.
And there was nothing else there about health insurance or life insurance?
No. And I do my homework.
This, this is really discriminatory. I mean, I know you're not, you know, council, I mean, council is not cutting back a person's retirement because when they were hired 30 years ago, they have a pre-existing condition. I know you're not, I don't think you can do that. So I don't understand at all why we have that, and like, administration to look into repealing it because, to me, it's, it's a, an expense that is unnecessary. And, uh, as I said, with health insurance, you cannot charge one person more than another because they have a pre-existing.
Absolutely.
Can't do it. With a life insurance policy, we have, we have a huge nu- uh, number of people who get life insurance. And you, you can't, they, they have got to give the same coverage to everyone.
Councilmember Catch, this, this revision in the, what we're putting forward does decouple that. What we're asking of you all is to approve the change to decouple it. That's, but I, I felt like it was important that you had the background on what this is about. It's another one of those little quirky things that we found that nobody could answer. So we had to dig deep into the archives to figure it out.
If we decouple, then we don't have to do it anymore?
Correct.
Okay, that's why.
However, we will continue to do all physicals the same way because you have to have a fitness-for-duty kind of physical for positions that are deemed sensitive. So police and fire, corrections, CDL drivers, folks like that. That's who jurisdictions do physicals for, which is logical. We're doing it to make sure that they're fit for duty. But to do 100% of your workforce tie up time for everybody else waiting, to what end?
So, the administration then is taking a look at the various job descriptions and is ranking-
We've done that. We've already done that.
How, how many fewer medical evaluations are now?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
There's gonna be fewer.
Do for, fewer?
Fewer of, of the, the medical, of the-
Medical, yes.
Yeah.
So how, I thought you said mental.
Well.
I said, "Well, they don't do that on the front end."
I was talking about myself, no, no. But, uh, what is, uh, so, how much did the number of people that, at least that's what, how much did it train?
Well, I, we can get that back to you in terms of the list. It's, it's, it's now certain classifications that are deemed sens- sensitive. We can get that list, but if you look at the total number of the, the workforce, it is significantly lower than the sensitive classifications. All police officers, so we know that, just rough numbers, that's 2,000. Um, all, uh, corrections, all fire. If you look, if you just look all, at all of them, that grouping plus other positions that the departments went, went through, CDL drivers, everybody like that, and, and looked at, it's significantly less than the entire population of 9,000 employees.
So we're gonna save money, that's good.
We'll save money, but it's the logic to me.
Yeah.
Good to save money, being good stewards of our resources, but it's the logic behind following something that was put in place in 1942.
Long before any of us were born.
Hey, thank you for allowing me to be a public administrator.
Well, 1942, the United States Navy fought to Japan and the Pacific. While ground troops prepared for the Battle of North Africa and Europe on the home front, millions of women entered the workforce, many for the first time. And Americans were face, forced to adjust to the rationing of food and consumer goods. Maybe they had something to do with it, who knows? Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Why don't we get, uh, Mr. Um, Whit Tantliff and Mr. Christopher Hartlove up here? They've been waiting so patiently. Uh, our friend from BCPS wanted to transfer some money. Uh, let's see. We appreciate your patience. Sorry for holding you up so long. Good evening.
Tonight, we're here to request, uh, budget appropriation transfer. Uh, in front of you will find a budget appropriation transfer request. The BCPS budget consists of 13 separate appropriations by activities prescribed by the Maryland Department of Education, or MSD. Transfers of funds between activities requires approval from the Board of Ed and the County Council. The BOE approved the BAT on April 18th. Based on close monitoring expenditures through the first three quarters of FY '23, current full-year expense projections show an overall surplus, but with shortfalls in some activities and surpluses in others. Because BCPS carries no contingency budget, the only way to manage unanticipated expenses during the year is via amendments to the budget. We're projecting overall we'll finish the year approximately $30 million under budget. Each quarter, all budget line transfers that make up this BAT were reviewed with the Budget Committee to address concerns previously raised in the efficiency study. Available funds of $33.7 million are coming from Activity III, instructional salaries due to salary savings due to vacancies and a challenging hiring environment. Additionally, $22.8 million in Activity III that was originally planned in substitute salaries now needs to be moved to the Kelly Services substitute contracted, which was implemented in FY 2023. 4.4 million is coming from mid-level administration due to vacancies and a challenging hiring environment. A requested transfer of $4 million into Activity IV, instructional textbooks and supplies will require funds required for the purchase of social studies textbooks, $414,000. Furnitures and supplies for the expansion of pre-kindergarten, $959,000. Spare Chromebooks for students, $800,000. And principals' reallocation of budget at the school level of $1.8 million. A transfer of $23.6 million into Activity V will mainly cover $22.8 million for the Kelly Substitute Contract. Substitutes have previously been planned in salaries and fixed charges, but are paid for on a contract in FY 2023. The transfer also cover year two of a six-year lease for display panels in the classroom of $767,000. A transfer of $2.5 million into Activity VI, Special Ed, will cover increased costs for non-public placements. A transfer of $5 million to Activity XI, Maintenance of Plant, will provide funds required for maintenance service contracts caused by excess vacancies in facilities, that's $4.5 million. And construction of a dance studio at Deep Creek Middle School for $500,000. Uh, finally, a transfer of $3 million to Activity XII, Fixed Charges, will cover the unplanned increase in state retirement costs. We'll now be glad to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Catch?
Yeah. Um, so, we're going to approve these transfers after they've taken place.
Correct.
And I guess there would be no way that you could estimate what they are earlier so that we, this contract with Kelly, et cetera, so, I mean, we, we didn't make any of these decisions.
Uh, well, the contract with Kelly Services was approved by the Board of Ed and the County Council in the FY '23 budget, but those dollars had originally been planned in salaries because they were our employees before. Um, so it was too late in the process to move those dollars before the budget was adopted. But because that initiative was amended, and at the time, the contract itself was only a $2 million add-on. It started at $3.5 million, it got reduced by the county exec to $2 million. So the add-ons, what was approved, but because all those dollars needed to move into contractual expense, right when the year started, we did a budget line transfer to move the dollars to the correct place. And we review all of those moves every quarter with the, uh, BCPS Budget Committee, which has been up and running for about a year and a half.
Do you, uh, count the executive when you're gonna do these, like, transfer money?
Uh, the process it's set up is, uh, by year end. When we, when we present it to you, uh, here, we're giving you the full package of, uh, proposed transfers.
So the Budget Committee, I guess that's of the Board?
It's a Board Budget Committee, yes. They meet monthly with us. Uh, they receive a report from us each quarter showing, uh, every transfer that has taken place. There's also a monthly report that goes to the Board that gives the financial summary of all the expenditures that have occurred during that month.
Now, does the, we, is the county executive get the document that you provide to the Budget Committee?
Uh, not that I know of.
Is it a public document?
Uh, yes, it's, it's because it goes into Board Docs.
Any longer pay individuals who aren't in the classroom out of the teacher's salary fund?
Could you repeat that question? I'm not clear on what you're asking.
Do, do you, let's say you have somebody working OIT. Are there any situations anymore where somebody working OIT gets paid out of teacher's salary?
You mean, uh, not that I can think of. I mean, if they're in the Department of Information Technology, that's where their budget would be covered. I don't know, there could be one situation where maybe someone's sort of temporarily assigned somewhere and their salary would still be charged to our central instructional, uh, salary, but that would, there's no situation I know of off the top of my head.
I know one time that did occur.
Okay.
You know, they would fund positions like in the audit office, somebody paid it, the teachers.
No, there's nothing, none of that is occurring that I, I'm aware of.
Good.
I'm sorry, yeah, the, our, our intention is to expend, uh, uh, positions where they are supposed to be expended. So we don't have any, that would be a, we would never intentionally do that, that would be a manipulation. So we, no, we, we're, other than an error, we, we wouldn't be doing that.
Thank you.
Good. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, oh, whoa, Ms. Rogers?
Um, Councilmember Catch, what is our, our practice? Because this transfer piece for all of the departments, you noticed that all the bats were coming, um, this evening. County Charter, Section 711B, subsection B, um, requires that we do this in the last quarter, uh, of the year. Of course, the last quarter of the fiscal year, uh, is, uh, April, May, and June. So everyone begins to look at everything. That's why they're coming at this point, uh, in the juncture because we have to have enough time budgetarily to make the adjustments.
Right. They, they did say, though, they prepare, provide a report quarterly that they give to the Budget Committee of the Board of Education.
Correct.
So I just, you know, I think it might be a good effort if they were to transmit that to the executives' office to give him an idea of what is going on, if transfers are necessary. I'm not criticizing the transfers, don't misunderstand. I just think the more information you can provide the county, the better.
Okay.
So noted, sir.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see here, Mr. Tantliff and Hartlove. I, I, I think you guys are making out much better than David, you did before. Didn't think I remembered. Oh, yeah. Yeah. That was a ruckus, uh, time. So thank you very much, and get out of here before I change their minds.
You fixed the bustle, sir.
After the no.
Well, Mr. Chair, this is just the work session, we haven't voted on this yet.
That's true, that's true. I may have spoken, I may have spoken too soon.
Oh, absolutely.
I know, I know, I know. Talk to where I know.
I, I had that. Ms. Rogers, we save the best for last. Um, page one. Ms. Rogers and, uh, Bill 3223.
Good evening again, Chairman Jones and council members. The administration is, uh, requesting, uh, several amendments from our side that, uh, we are indeed working on and will, uh, put forward um, to give you an understanding of, of what those amendments are. Um, in reviewing all of the, um, duties and activities of the DEI, uh, which is an informal kind of operation right now in terms of office because it was never deemed an office. We brought the appropriate, um, activities together. They can actually be a division of HR because that's where, um, DEI is currently budgeted. Um, they're budgeted in HR, and we are working on appropriate amendments to bring before you to consider. And our goal is to get them to you as soon as possible for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening, what's left of it.